All right, at seven thirty, everyone would please rise. We're going to have an indication by Mr. Marrow, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we give thanks to the wonderful life that you've given us, the daily blessings we receive. We give thanks for the opportunity to live in a free country and make our own decisions. We ask your blessings on this council, and we ask your guidance over the decisions we make. We ask you to watch over our service minimums and to protect our freedom and our safety forces and to protect our city. But as we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the highest states of our earth and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call.
Shador. Heffery.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Mr. President, the judge, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the counsel, Mr. Gray. Motion second, excuse me, Mr. Gray, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close in time, Mr. Gray has been excused. Now need approval minutes of September sixteenth and the September thirtieth, council meetings? Go ahead.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close in time, minutes have been approved. Lexicent appointments are none, special orders in committees? Your regards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, want to join me up, please?
Which one?
You.
I knew that.
Tonight is the, today is the fiftieth anniversary of the Heath Police Department. It was established years ago, October seventh, and in recognition of this momentous occasion, I have a mayoral proclamation that I'll read, and then Chief present to you, and you can display over in the department. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the city of Heath, Ohio, to recognize occasions of outstanding significance. Whereas on Monday, October seventh, two thousand thirteen, the Heath Police Department will be celebrating its fifty year anniversary. Whereas on October seventh, nineteen sixty-three, the police department was established through an ordinance passed by the village of Heath Council and consisted of a chief, one full-time patrol officer, and nine auxiliary officers. Whereas the city of Heath became internationally accredited law enforcement agency through Kalia Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies in July of nineteen ninety-seven. Whereas for maintaining accreditation for fifteen continuous years, Heath Police Department has gained the meritorious agency status. Whereas the police department currently consists of eighteen full-time officers, seven reserve officers, five full-time dispatchers, and two clerks that respond to approximately sixteen thousand calls per service annually. Whereas the Heath Police Department strives daily to fulfill its mission to provide professional law enforcement services in partnership with our community and emphasizing integrity, accountability, and respect to uphold their model of serving with honor. Now therefore, I, Mark D. Johns, mayor of the city of Heath, Ohio, do hereby proclaim and congratulate the city of Heath Police Department on their fifty year anniversary. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you.
Very nice. It's very, it's beautiful. As a matter of fact, it'll go very nicely with all the other visuals that we've purchased and adhered to, anything that a sticker will stick to, such as our anniversary envelopes on our police cards. And one of the other things that we thought would be very, would be very memorable for this memorable occasion, this milestone, were challenge points which I know I spoke to council at length about. We didn't have much of a budget, so the supervisor bought these, and they turned out to be a very beautiful point. And typically, in the military, if a NCO or commander sees a troop or soldier do a good deed, do above and beyond duty, that's something that that commander could reach his pocket and hand to the soldier, draw on the spot for a job well done. And so, since we got these, I have not issued one yet until tonight, and I'm going to get my first one, Rebecca Goodwin. Because that has been so instrumental in helping us celebrate this fiftieth anniversary, and you helped me so much on my drag race that I hosted, and all the logistics and the fundraising, and you did a great job. You did a wonderful job, so for that, you feel it.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations, business, and petitions communications.
This is a memo regarding the utility accounts. This is below the utility accounts, and the rules of bank of days and quarters to check the mortgage front and poll aid of the ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and six. This information is submitted to council and will be forwarded to the order there of looking county.
Mr. President, Mr. Marrow. Motion second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close in time, motion carried. Next education.
Now regarding the Dayton, Hunter Pike, Brass and Leeds, importance with chapter nine, one, three, four, and four, we're seeing the heat cut by ordinance before our listed parties failed to respond to some notices for hydrographing on that leads, and subsequently a address in need to be cut under direction of the city. In accordance with chapters nine, one, three, four, and five, and nine, one, three, four, and six, the information is forwarded to council. The court of council upon approval by council is requested to forward in writing the work fees to the order there of looking county, conclusion on tax to book it.
That's right. Motion second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Close in time, motion carried. All in favor receiving the file, say aye. Aye. Close in time, motion carried. All right, brings us to the visitor section. Any visitor who'd like to speak, approach the podium, take your name and address, and tell us your concerns.
Yes, she's coming, just. Oh, thank you very much for the recognition. Thank you, Chief. I really did want one of those coins. I didn't expect it, but thank you. I just want to follow through with something that I have been doing all the history on them, and I was just going to read something, and it's about the induction of the police force. On October eighth of nineteen sixty-three is what the date is, Heath Mayor Edward Hinchcock began taking applications for a W. Police Department in the next fortified days, and it was a council budget that forced into existence for the board to decision after nearly two years of debating the issue. So, I just thought it was neat, and I have been doing a lot of history on it. So, follow through. There's cake, cupcakes and coffee. Don't forget that. Thank you. I'm sorry. Becky gives one sixteen-eleven, Hebron Road. I'm a little off on my rock, do I?
Any other visitor?
Good evening, Trevor Thomas, ninety-eight, James Avenue, Heath, Ohio. I'm here tonight as superintendent of Heath City Schools, and I wanted to share some information with you about our upcoming levy request. First of all, before that, congratulations, Chief Shepherd. I think the Heath Police have been phenomenal in their support of everything that you guys do for us, especially the thing that stands out is the unsolicited presence in our buildings last year after the Sandy Hook tragedy, and continued cooperation and relationship since that time. Just, your officers have been excellent, so thank you very much and congratulations. The thing that we feel is important, if we're coming to our citizens and our community and asking for a new levy request, and it is a new levy request, is for us to thoroughly communicate why we're doing so. The last new levy request that the city, that the school district has asked for was in two thousand seven. It did pass in two thousand seven, and it was for, it was a levy that would collect two point six million dollars per year for, at that time, three years' time. We then renewed that levy in two thousand ten, and at the time that we renewed that levy in two thousand ten, we made a commitment to the voters that we would not run another new levy request for three years. The way funding works, and I know that a lot of people here are familiar, is when we pass, when we ask for a levy request, we ask for a set amount of money, and that money does not adjust upwards no matter what happens. In that time, at the time over the last six years, we've lost over one point three million dollars in annual funding due to a change in the tax structure where tangible personal property tax was eliminated, and there were some other smaller cuts and adjustments to our tax structure that have affected us. To be able to meet those cuts and to be able to deal with that reductions in funds, we've taken several measures. We have eliminated twenty-five staff positions in that time over the last six years in our school districts. Those consist of teaching positions, aides, secretaries, bus drivers, custodians, all of those positions that are so critical. We have, also with our staff, we've had no base increases for pay in the last four years, and our teachers have not had a step increase as well in the last four years. So, just, I know that that can be painful for a lot of people, but we have some teachers that are, they're in their fifth year, they came in making thirty-three thousand dollars, and they still make about thirty-three thousand dollars, and that can be a difficult bottom line. We are appreciative of their sacrifice. We have been upgraded excellent in the last two years. The school rating system has changed, and we do have some areas that we need to improve on. One of those areas has really affected how we perform, but we are working very hard on that. We feel that we provide excellent education for our students. Since we have accepted open enrollment, we have been told constantly about how people appreciate our school district and the small field that it offers to, in comparison to some of the other larger school districts. The reason we have gone down the path of open enrollment is fiscal responsibility. We do have about a hundred and forty-five students that live in our district that attend either a community school or a neighboring school district every year, and for each one of those students that leaves and attends one of those schools, that's fifty-seven hundred dollars. So, in round numbers, every year we lose seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding, and since our funding multiplies year after year, we're compounding funding, that does put a huge hole in our budget, and that is why we considered open enrollment, and we did go down that road. This coming year, instead of losing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we were able to gain back five hundred thousand of that loss and only lose two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We hope to be able to turn that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit into zero, and that would really improve our long-term financial health. We believe that our teachers do a great job, we really believe that the school district is something that the community is proud of, because when I came here in two thousand seven, I learned a great deal about how proud everybody is of this school district, because it's a very unique story in creating a school district by a bunch of people who cared about their community so much that they just wanted something that was really special and really good for our kids. So, in order to be able to do that, we are asking for a two million dollar levy, raise two million additional dollars per year. It is new money, it is for a five-year period of time. The reason I say two million, if we convert it to millet, like people are used to hearing that's seven point nine mils, and it would equate to two hundred and seventy-five dollars in additional taxes per one hundred thousand dollars in property value. This is simply to operate at the level we are operating at now, and it's not to add any type of new services, it's not to add any type of buildings, it is just for operating expenses. We are projecting a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit at the end of this year, so if the levy were to fail, we will have to make some mid-year cuts to get us through the year, such as going to pay participate, sports, two hundred and fifty dollars for high school students, one hundred and seventy-five for middle school students, and activities, go to state minimum busing, and we would have to remove some remediation student positions that are critical to us, some aid positions, and then at the end of the year, we would cut the minimum of free teaching positions at the end of this year. So, that is where we stand. It is simply for necessary operating expenses, nothing extra. We waited this long because we wanted to keep our promise to the voters that we would not come back till two thousand thirteen, and wanted to make sure we do exactly how much money we were asking for after the release of the state budget, and we saw how open enrollment would affect us. And so, we are in that position now, but it does make this issue so critical that we pass it on the first time. I don't have anything else, and I sincerely appreciate your time and your indulgence.
Any other visitor who'd like to speak?
Jimmy, eighteen twenty-five, Berkshire Drive. I'm kind of here to speak out a little bit of a parent perspective on the upcoming Heath City School levy. I'm supportive of that, sharing with Ted Mathis, and it's been quite a learning experience. Just a little bit of background, I'm here in Heath Brad, we chose to build our home here twelve years ago, first grader and fifth grader, and being, I was part of the renewal committee in two thousand and ten, and this year is a different animal. And so, we have seen it for ourselves to try to learn a little bit more about the middle school and the high school, thinking we're not a part of us, since we do have elementary kids, and the system's been very open in providing facts to us, we're out knocking on doors, we're trying to get some campaign going. Some folks didn't even know that we were going to have the levies, though, we're just trying to get information out there. I think that our schools are the tipping point, beyond which I believe they're going to decline, and I don't like to say that. And I just want to really stress how important that link between our community and our schools are, we're supporting each other, our home rental system, and, you know, I just, I really wanted to see everybody's support. I'm worried about the essential cuts, library, gym, music, art, that's a big part of my kiddo's day, it's a big part of a lot of the students' day, they're making some contacts with a teacher, one conversation for parents' sports team, the bonding that they're going to have on the team. If we miss out on this levy, then this misses opportunities for our students, and I think it's really going to impact us a great deal. Trying to take this from my letter that I wrote together. I would just make sure to anybody who had any questions to come to our board meetings, and Mr. Thomas said they're very forthcoming, and any questions that we've had from the folks out there, and I hope that we can all work together and keep that chain reaction going, because I'll start to just have a moment that we can help each other and be successful.
You have others?
Good evening, my name is Jim Roberts, and I'm over on Drive in Heath. I was told to show up tonight and shut my mouth and look pretty. I'll go one for three. Just wanted to add just a couple of things, you guys all know me. First of all, one of the things that our committee's run into is some of the reasons why people might vote against our levy, and then two of the things we've heard, one is they're upset with the media project, and two is they don't like the electronic signs. And we're like, don't blame us. But that's the kind of stuff you hear, the crossover, you know, when you guys had your income tax, you probably heard things about it, I like my year coaches or something, so we're such a small community, we're completely out of line. I think Trevor covered almost everything that I would want to cover, but just let me throw a little bit more detail at you. We originally intended to have a levy on this past minute, and back in December, of course, the state budget was completely in flux, we had no idea if we were going to gain a million dollars or lose a million dollars, and so how do you pick a levy amount? And you really don't know what kind of money you're going to use basis. Open enrollment hadn't been passed yet, and there was some, you know, challenge to whether we really wanted to move forward or back. That wasn't approved until later in the year. And so, we knew we needed to pass this levy in two thousand and thirteen, but to go in May was a highly risky venture, because we weren't, we're not going to get the dollar amount right, we're going to ask for too much, or ask for too little. Had we gone in May, we would have been asking for at least nine point nine mils, probably something even double digits, which is usually a death knell for a school levy, just can't ask that kind of one. Because we waited, because the state budget this time was actually somewhat positive towards public schools, because open enrollment's been such a success, we were able to go to seven point nine mil equivalent, which is much more stomachable, if you will. So, we feel like our management work on, and our approach to the levy's been very good. The risk loop we ran is that we only have one chance to pass it, and Trevor talked about mid-year cuts, if we need to make those because of the levy failure now, but it actually gets worse than that. If we were pass a levy next minute, which we would go after if we fail this time, we wouldn't start collecting that money until January of fifteen. So, that means we would have into next school year the same budget we have now, which means we would be into major cuts, and you would start to see teaching positions that we really can't afford to cut come, you would start to see extracurricular activities disappear, you would start to see major, major impacts. You'll see busing to the state minimum standard. For a community of the size of Heath, state minimum standard means basically the bus elementary hit, of course, doesn't go to rich, and that's just about it. So, it's really hard for me to think. We feel very good about the decisions we've made, because it's been prudent and it's been beneficial, it's allowed us to ask for a smaller amount, at the risk of, if we fail the first time, we've got major problems. I want you guys, as community leaders, to understand the situation, certainly I know you're approached in a grocery store or football game, whatever, so we'd like you to understand what we're doing and why we've done it, and if you have any questions, please feel free to talk to any one of the board members or administrators or the junior at that, and we appreciate your time. Thanks. Just one more thing, if you're unhappy with the school board, you're getting rid of two clowns that have been on there on this, it's a fresh start. Anybody else like to speak? Saying that, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance and budget, this is cool.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and budget on this evening at six to twelve. We have three legislative requests from Louisiana, first with the authorized disposal of eight mobile data computers, one two thousand three Chevrolet avalanche pickup truck, and one two thousand four Ford Crown Victoria sedan from the police department, with proceeds going to the law enforcement trust fund, and also asking that we waive the second reading on that to allow this process to begin. The second legislative request was change orders for the football bridge project, requesting four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-three cents for municipal improvements to reimburse ODOT change orders on the football track project. And the third legislative request was to buy a dump truck bed, authorizing eight thousand dollars for municipal improvements to purchase the dump truck body for the street department. It's a old truck that runs well and everything's living up to the body, so that's been discussed previously in the street department. Under other items, one item, Dr. Alexander was approached by Beth Shepherd from the pickup tax division, stating that she felt that she might need qualifications to sit for the CPA exam, and wondered if the city would reimburse her for this if she took the exam and passed. This was merely a discussion tonight, but there were questions from council about the necessity of this for her job and the benefits of the city, and so that was just a set of just instructions. Did you have anything to add, and then to Commissioner?
No, not this time. I'm here on senior.
I'll be there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Public services, Mr. Heffery, Mr. Marrow, Mr. Heffery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee met on Monday, September twenty-third, five thirty. Utilities Director John Geller gave us a report. John first gave us a list of the link of utility accounts, and they will go to the county office for action. First on the agenda for water, the AAT thanked the Heath Water Plant for doing their part in helping reduce unnecessary electric energy usage in Ohio, and gave us a check for six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Second on the agenda, John shows us a graph on water units sold, and he said that, you know, we had two thousand and four, or, excuse me, four thousand and four units, John, am I right on that?
Yeah.
That approximately, that were used in the two thousand twelve, and the collective people are conserving the water. Two thousand thirteen looks like about the same amount. Third on the agenda, John said that he would like to follow up on doing a survey of potential water users. John gave us an update on part B that's going, and John said he was looking at approximately two hundred and eighty-three potential customers, and provided us with a letter to survey potential users. John provided us with a letter to, John provided us some numbers on what we might realize from new customers, the numbers were all hypothetical with the cost to install and income. After a lengthy discussion on the subject and making some changes to the survey letter, John said he would meet with township people and let them know what we are planning to do. He will work on getting the surveys sent out as soon as possible. Fourth on the agenda was the water distribution update, hydrant service, and repair number six. Third box is adjusted, five existing services replaced, two blue jay road replaced, and corporation stop, the dial box, there was one. Final readings, sixty-eight, work orders, forty-four, hydrant tanks, three. Fifth on the agenda was the water plant improvement update, discussed variable frequency drives from the high service building, being exposed to chlorine, high service pumps should be delivered in mid-October, subgrade to be tested for compaction, talking about mechanical seals versus patterned land on pumps. Concrete work is to start on the slab four the first week in October, and moving raw water line. Finally, on the agenda for water, the cover on farm grid drives completed, bacteria testing and installed, one hundred feet, new water line, everything is progressing well. On the wastewater side, first, we have water plant corrected data counts on the list station, corrected problem with the raw pumps not shooting alarms, a maintenance schedule was developed on the Excel spreadsheet by Carol Prozar. Hosted digestive dam and empty number four, number three, drain clarifier, air reduction system replaced all, John, they have the EPA on stuff, they're right down. The wastewater bill, John, the graph would show that that's the same water slide that if you don't use water, you're not going to have to treat much, so it's not equal, so it shows that we're, the wastewater will be less. Collection system update, this- Collection system update, disassembled offensive box from lift station. Plus sewer line on the hard core and vacuum out van holes on the side of the drive. The update on the box from lift station, putting in the jack porting system, and this is going well. Nick Ross has been with this project from the beginning and done a great job inspecting all aspects of the job. We are now on a gravity feed from Fox Run. With nothing else to report to committee adjourned at six forty-five P M. Anything to add, John?
I have one thing to add. I want to recognize Lee McHale with eleven years of service to the city this month. Excellent. That's all. Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Nelson. Mr. President, Public Safety, Lee Hardman, October fourteenth, five thirty P M. Chief Shepherd, you have to do that.
Yes.
You're welcome. Nothing right now, thank you. Streets and Grange, Mr. Herrle. And streets and Grange will meet Monday afternoon, twenty-third at five thirty P M. Fox Run there, so. Community involved, is that it?
Yes. Community, Mr. Nelson, the song's made next night by thirty. And we have agenda about eight items or nine items. And the number one was Hopeful Rock Painting Plan, just a share. And if you count the year two thousand sixteen. Estimated cost is a quarter of twenty-nine thousand. And ODOT, ODOT is. Yeah, three hundred and forty-three thousand. And the city's passed one hundred and six thousand. And that also becomes O W C L, so we are members of this, it's awesome. And they did say plant this time because it's court size for ODOT's payment, state rock firm fee. And we need to get a better process. And the guy's setting report, Eddie Gabe Willis, at two on New Franklin, Grandview Avenue, Fair Drive. And it's a verb which is over the after travel. And Hopeful Rock, the other report was Hopeful Rock Drive Bridge change order. And we had an extra day to press there for four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-three cents for, and that was approved. And the next item was the painting of Irvingland Drive West. Start date on this, on October sixteenth and ninth street. Irvingland, it's closed between Thornwood Drive and Keller Drive. But they're going to paint it all the way to the railroad and then they're going to drive between train traffic for the food there to Keller Drive. But there'll be rest of it when it's approved. And the fourth water drive, Cobbleton update. Eddie said that was probably finished today or tomorrow. The next item was the income of the vehicles. Six seventy Irvingland Drive East, there were two vehicles in pounds that they had then. Part of the violation was the question that they were out. And a potential future violation to the also in eleven ninety-eight Rock Hill Road. And a violation, the junk violation from this property was ordered from David Horst in our city library. All of the day recreation, children's food night at school truck, school truck killer Halloween at City Hall. And they're going to decorate it. And Christmas City Hall, we decorated and Jen Wilton and the local group decorated all of both hallways. And that's great. And we also had quite a bit of discussion on digital signs. The F H J A really never determined, was never determined after the quad status there. And council reached a step in direction. Please, he didn't allow McDonald's, so council would very agree to not have John and Eddie, third of all, come up and celebrate. Changes not agreed for, oh, hold on, the council's established, important now. Bring the council next year, next month's meeting and one later, it did, and we'll enact the changes and discuss. And your tip said, want to know, we've passed okay for purpose of truck, dump truck. The issues when there was one truck that we had in the district department that was very difficult. John, do you have anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, David Shea, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and David Shea, we meet Monday, October twenty-first, at the yearly thousand three.
Thank you. Plank Commission, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Plank Commission's met Thursday, September twenty-sixth. I called the meeting order at seven to one. We were late five minutes, I think because we were chatting around something. Our new business, we had the lot split at five sixty-seven Franklin Avenue. And Mr. Brock presented the information on lot splits to the commission and I did a discussion, it was unanimously approved. The commission also reviewed the sketch plan for the Zandex potential development at six seventy-five Heath Road. Eddie Hunt presented that sketch plan information and highlighted that all the requirements of City Heath. That sketch plan was approved as presented by all. Also, the Southgate Spat Building being going up at fourteen seventy-five James Parkway. Was the Southgate presented the final plans for that to the commission. And after review and discussion, those final plans were approved with variance to adopt landscaping as presented. Approved by all. And then also, Mr. Hunt presented plans to the commission for the parking lot. Work being done at Kaiser Aluminum. After discussion, preliminary plans for that were approved by all. And our old business, Mr. Brock discussed with the commission information regarding the sign ordinance and made a recommendation. Or made a suggestion that the Plank Commission make a recommendation to council as to whether or not they should alter the existing ordinance. The commission adjourned at eight forty-eight P M. John, anything else?
No, thank you. International ordinances, ordinance eighty-three, two thousand thirteen.
Ordinance eighty-three, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing the incorporation of thirteen thousand dollars for new C M I server. Seven thousand eight hundred within the general fund for data network services. And two thousand six hundred within the oil fund capital outlay. Two thousand six hundred within the waste port fund capital outlay. Creative Microsystems, Microsystems, Inc.
Mr. Morrow.
I'd like to make the motion to waive the second reading, ordinance eighty-three, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Motion to waive, Rocko.
Heffley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Motion waived the brief. Mr. President. Mr. Morrow.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand thirteen.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, with my point of information, appreciate council waiving second reading on this. Our C M I server is a critical component in the payment of, in processing the facility bills. Various other payments that are made to the city. The, it has exceeded its expected lifespan and is reaching a maximum capacity on its memory. So a new server needs to be put into place ASAP.
Any other discussion? Saying that, Rocko.
Heffley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-three, two thousand thirteen, have been adopted. Ordinance eighty-four, two thousand thirteen.
Ordinance eighty-four, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance waiving beds, authorizing indirect and disposable aid. Circles mobile data computers. One two thousand three Chevy Avalanche and one two thousand four Ford Crown Victoria, the first one.
Mr. President, Mr. Nelson, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading on ordinance eighty-four, two thousand thirteen.
Second. A motion and a second to waive, Rocko.
Heffley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion waived the brief.
Mr. President, Mr. Nelson, I'd like to make a motion to waive ordinance eighty-four, two thousand thirteen.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion, Mr. President?
With my point of information, this is equipment that our police department has placed. And we have no need for at this point. And Doctor Alexander, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to go through the standard procedures as far as disposal of that, correct?
Absolutely correct. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Say that, Rocko.
Heffley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Paul.
Ordinance eighty-four, two thousand thirteen. Okay, brings its ordinance, so second reading, ordinance eighty-two, two thousand thirteen.
Ordinance eighty-two, two thousand thirteen, and ordinance authorizing directing the main construction agreement. For that install rock bolts and help rolls of ground state out thirteen.
Mr. Henry. Have motion and a second, any discussion? Saying that, Rocko.
Heffley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-two, two thousand thirteen, have been adopted. There are head resolutions on the first reading, there are resolutions on the second reading. Records reports to city officials, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to all the visitors who are here this evening. Wanted to, first of all, mention I appreciated Trevor Thomas and those who are working on the school levy attending tonight. And providing some information on the issue that's sort of brought to voters in Heath this fall. And how it's conformed it is to the city schools that their mission is supported. I know that a little over ten years ago now, my wife and I, making a decision to move back to this area. We were looking at buying a house anywhere from the eastern suburbs of Columbus to eastern edge of Woodie County. And primary reason why we decided to buy our house in Heath is the strength of the city school system. You know, I can, anybody now can get their hands on information very easily as it relates to the performance of city schools. We believed then and we believe now that you get a lot of bang for your buck with heat city schools. It's also important from, the comment was made, I take by Mr. Thomas, that in some ways, our school system and our city government functions are linked together. We succeed together or we fail together, and there is some truth to that. Jim mentioned how sometimes they get comments from things that we're involved in. I know that I, just this past weekend, was asked by resident Brantville why there seems to be a difficulty with students from other schools attending dances and proms or whatever in Heath. And I said, that's not ideal. But it is important, you know, that if our city schools, I'm a firm believer that nothing stands still. You're either getting better or you're getting worse. And we need heat city schools to be strong. This city needs heat city schools to be strong. Our employers in this area need to make sure that now and in the future, they have a workforce that they can train to do the job and they can draw from for employment needs. And that starts with good education. If we want to attract additional employers to this area, believe me, they look at this stuff. They consider this stuff strongly when they make a decision of where they want to locate. So I appreciate them being here. I appreciate them sharing that information with us. I support their efforts in getting this, and I know that it's something that we don't want to see in the alternative. We don't want to see our city schools beginning to come on. Because in the end, that'll be bad, not just for the school system, it'll be bad for the city as a whole. I also wanted to mention, I posted something on the city Facebook page. Mark your calendars for November, see what is the date. What was it, November second? You know, they have the annual toy run from Toys R Us and out to the Salvation Army. Christmas cheer program Salvation Army puts on is outstanding. Having been involved with that through the years, it's unbelievable how the need has increased. And so I posted something on the city's Facebook page. If you haven't liked the city's Facebook play page, please do so about that. And I would encourage everyone, even if you don't, you know, ride a motorcycle, stop out there that day, you know, somewhere between eleven and one. Pick up a couple of things for the kids. The guys, they'll get a caravan, a police escort over to Salvation Army and deliver the toys. Fully, you know, there's a lot of people who need help and these families, that's the majority of them. Really, you appreciate the assistance that they get. And finally, just want to wish my dad down in Lancaster a happy seventy-second birthday.
Doctor Alexander, I just want to welcome everybody here. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Director Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy birthday, Mr. Johnson.
Let's start down this, Mr. Henry, anyway.
I'd like to welcome everybody here and I appreciate the input of the superintendent and school board and committee. I said when they come up that I'm going to look for my lead, my lead, take the money, go to committee. Because, and if you sit down, you figure it out, wherever committee he paid locally in tax, it comes off in federal debt, too. It's worth it, and our students, my two kids, they go to college. And I believe that he's a student of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome everyone. I'd like to thank Chief Shepherd and our police department, who have been here for service and registered to have four days in recognition of all the creation he does right now. And I also want to say that I support if city's full levy, there is a sign in my yard.
I don't know, I just text you, I don't have a sign in my yard.
My daughter moved to Heath when she was four and she went all the way through the city school for a simple great experience. And I want to continue to do that for all the kids that we have here, so we're consistent.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everybody here. Thank you, thank you very much for all the help. Really, really appreciate that. Chief Shepherd, congratulations, it's a great graduation. It's a certainly milestone and, you know, it's something we proud of. My, all the citizens, I mean, that we have to proud of, I shouldn't say, but chief, it's, I mean, cheers to your issues, so congratulations. Thank you for all the good you've done for us. I also kind of want to add to what Mayor Johnson about the schools. And then when we moved to Ohio, the only difference I think is that, you know, we could sit down together and kind of look at some of the things that we, you know, do or went through. It was pretty much progress, but it was a good choice. Great ability, great schools. You know, even though my kids, they're not in the school system and they're out, I most certainly will support the school levy. We hear a lot of people talk about things about City Heath, and everybody seems to, the schools are very popular with us. And when they talk about whether they want to kick it, so without a doubt, I personally will be supporting it. without a doubt, I personally will be supporting it, everybody that has behind the question sway in that direction. I don't think I have the technical support for it, but yes, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to everybody. Would love to be these schools, I too will be supporting, loving. Congratulations on fifty years, the police department, and I see we're going to have cupcakes out there. It's like, why does you wait for? Thank you. Mr. Brock, congratulations, you're there, you're looking excellent. But that.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to also, long-term on your receiving and, lucky I also say that, thanks for all the good work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Load of my papers. Good to see you here. And a lot of people may not know this, but my five children, one two, they're a captain in a public and private school, but I am in support of the city school level. I chose my kids to go to a private school, but I think that we have a great school, parents city, and I think that people should do more. With that, I'll end. Thank you. Down below, I'm going to start with the, I call him the fifty-year guy, Chief Shepherd.
Well, folks, thanks again to the Bureau for the fire commission, you know, well wishes. I would have liked to have had the entire department here to receive your congratulations, but obviously, our job entails hours and weird days off and they couldn't be here, so thank you for all that.
Next, Mr. Brock.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Nelson.
Just mentioned that I heard a bench open house is Saturday, one to five, station hours. Come on, come on. Thank you.
Kim Yeller.
Just for the, the third apartment owners, the years, and also being part of the high school and all my sister, people argue that it's a much smaller system, like you get rid of shit. I'm going to do.
I'm going to take my mic step just a little. I'll just say that, yeah, I agree. I kind of echo everyone saying, he graduated himself, my daughters graduate from Heath, so why should the school board go ahead? So, yeah, I'm in support of it. There's something else I thought I mentioned.
President, do you think anything else you had to say?
I'm just going, so you guys get hungry and hungry. That's it, we're in a hurry to eat, so I'm going to go up the park short. New business, there's none, greeting events, miscellaneous, none. What should you adjourn?
Salute.
Home fair job?
Aye.
We're.